Good morning, everyone, and welcome. So glad to see you this morning and have you here to participate in Paulding County Government. This time I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners Work Session for April the 9th, 2024, to order. And Rodney, if you want to bring that list forward of citizens wishing to speak. If you've got your phone on, can you go collect any phones that people have on? So good to have Ms. Tabitha Pollard, who is such a great leader for our staff, to bring us the invocation this morning, and then we'll all pledge the flag together. Stand if you're able.
Thank you, Lord, Miss Day, that you preserve gracious blessings with us. We thank you for each and every day, as your word tells us that every day is a gift from you. We pray, Lord, that you would protect our first responders, as they are quick to protect, put themselves in harm's way to protect us. We pray that you would put your shield around them to protect them. We pray, Lord, for wisdom today. We pray that you would grant each one of these commissioners the wisdom they need to make decisions for the betterment of Paulding and for in your will. Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tabitha. And also would like to recognize Mr. Boyd Austin, who's the Director of the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission. Thanks for being here today, Boyd. He and his staff are helping Paulding County out in many, many ways. March the 26th, work session minutes and also the regular board meeting minutes are available for your review on the back table, if you're interested in having a copy of that. Team Paulding Employee of the Month was Zach Tubbs with Parks and Rec and Cultural Affairs Development. And we're going to watch together here a little video on awarding him that for the month. Zach has been with us about three years as a program coordinator here at Mount Tabor. He's absolutely awesome. He just loves his job, you know, to be quite honest. He loves coming to work. He's helped us with a number of grant initiatives that have benefited the folks here in Paulding. The kids just love him. The way that he's able to reach these kids, he's certainly creating an impact. Zach's work ethic is just, it's unmatched. It just makes you feel good that you're being represented by somebody like Zach, always positive. The parents see the effect that what he's doing has on their kids, and it just keeps continuing to grow. We're proud of him. Thank you, Zach. You know, sometimes it might seem that it goes unnoticed, but it doesn't, not just by county folks, but by the folks that you're working with every day. I wouldn't want to mess with him either, would you, Lauren? So good this morning for the Board of Commissioners to present the National Safe Digging Month Proclamation to Joe Ordway of AT&amp;T, the Paulding Utilities Coordinating Committee President, and Audrey Biles of Paulding County DOT Utilities Coordinator, and Paulding County UCC Secretary. Again, UCC is Utilities Coordinating Committee. So we've got a, I've got a proclamation here, and I'm going to read that. If I should be aware, I'm not aware that Joe Ordway is here, so I don't want to... Joe? Yeah, why don't you, I don't know if you're going to say anything, why don't you come up to the lectern and then you can get your speech out, and we'll listen to that. But the proclamation reads, let me just stand up. Whereas thousands of time each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. And whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. Whereas the Paulding County Utility Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the National 811 Notification System in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility by using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Paulding County can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. And therefore, I, David L. Carmichael of Paulding County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Paulding County Safe Digging Month, and encourage contractors and homeowners throughout Paulding County to always call 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I want to thank the Board. Chairman Carmichael, thank you very much for that presentation. I was going to have my normal speech, but in lieu of that, looking at the tragic event that happened in April 4th of 77, I was a small kid, but I definitely remember that on the news. But to your point, though, tying this in with 811, keeping the channels open for our first responders is very, very key. You know, unfortunately, back then, we didn't have that. It was about the early 80s when we had 811 come about. But then again, when you look at something like this, all the more reason why we need to call for dig locates and make sure that we don't cut anything out of service, because you never know. You never know. But I'll leave it with that, and I greatly appreciate all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would you head this way, and let me give you this proclamation and get a picture? Before y'all sit down, can you introduce the three that are with you?
This is Andrea Biles. One gets a, this is Brady Hamilton. This is our, our, our...
(Applause).
Good to see you.
Thanks, Andrea.
Thank you all.
The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Remembering Flight 242 Proclamation also this morning. So I don't have your name here in front of me.
Sandy Pearl.
Say that again.
Sandy Pearl.
Sandy Pearl is here, who was on the flight. And who's the gentleman with you, Sandy?
Right here, my gentleman. Sure.
Okay. Well, I want to read the proclamation for Remembering Flight 242. Now, you were on that plane. My wife was in the air that day, another airplane, thankfully. So Remembering Flight 242. Whereas on April the 4th, 1977, Southern Airways Flight 242 was flying from Huntsville, Alabama, to Atlanta when it encountered a dangerous thunderstorm over Rome, Georgia. The plane was forced to perform an emergency landing on Dallas-Aquworth Highway in the New Hope community. Whereas following the emergency landing, impact forces and fire led to the death of 63 flight passengers and nine civilians on the ground, including the entire flight crew. A total of 22 passengers survived the landing, including both flight attendants, who were later commended by the National Transportation Safety Board for their divisive actions, decisive actions. Whereas this April the 4th, 2024, marks the 47th anniversary of this devastating event, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, along with the community of New Hope and all of Paulding, want to recognize the lives lost while acknowledging the heroism of the crew and the citizens that came together on that faithful day. Whereas on April the 4th, 2021, a monument was created in the, in the New Hope community to memorialize the victims lost on Southern Airways Flight 242 and to honor the survivors. Now therefore, I, David L. Carmichael, Chairman of the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, along with my fellow commissioners, do hereby join in remembering those lost on Flight 242 and those that survived. Would y'all like to say anything this morning?
First of all, I'd like to thank you on behalf of every life in this community and everyone that was a part of the airplane that came to a crash landing in your community. This is so important that we act on this, to lift the awareness in Paulding County and to acknowledge the heroism that came from your citizens, extending way beyond themselves that anyone could comprehend at the scene of the crash. And many people that chose their professions at such a young age to go into EMT, firemen, policemen, and paramedics, doctors and nurses and therapists. People would take the drapes off of their living room and brought them to the scene of the crash to accommodate covering bodies. They would touch things and have to shake their hands with the skin that was attached and evacuating the carnage that was left before them that they'd never seen. In my heart, I have grown as a person because of what Paulding County has given to me. The guilt, survivor's guilt, still remains with me, and it's Paulding County that has given so much back to me every time I came here, that inspired me and gave me the drive to stay visible and be a voice for those that cannot speak. You should be honored and proud. The response that was given, the things that have changed, and the education that needs to be done in outreach programs in the high schools, the sports, the ROTCs, and the youth programs in your churches, to educate them on what this is, because it has to live on beyond us. And there's not a person probably here that doesn't know somebody, or they've grown up saying, "I remember when so-and-so said and talked about this." I want you to know that my life is complete. This was God given, and it's His power that's greater than me, that gives me the strength to face each day or wake up from a dream that's reoccurred. Thank you so much for the legacies and lives that you're honoring and remembering, people that have never been here because they live afar. This is something to be very, very proud of. The emotion, the passion, and all that you've done to bring this to fruition has given me a place to come to that's comfort and all together in one piece instead of the carnage I remember throughout the path of destruction of this flight. Thank you so much, and Godspeed. And I'm just so honored to be here, and thank you for all that you did and how you cared for me. God bless you, and thank you.
Sandy, that was so well said. Come up. That was so beautifully stated, and you know, it's something we don't want to ever forget. We can consider you a Paulding Countyan for what you've been through.
Thank you all so much. Thank you. And to all of y'all that came today, I thank you. I thank you. This, this piece of paper has many voices that you can't hear, many, many voices. Sometimes you say this silence is deafening. If you could hear my heart beating right now and what I'm trying to hold back, thank you so much. You are far beyond what some would say, a little country county. This is magnanimous, and on behalf of everyone, I thank you, and I know they're proud and never forget. That's the greatest peace a loved one can have. This is beautiful. Thank you. (Applause). Do I have to give this to you?
No, it's yours.
Is mine?
Unless you want me to frame it. It's yours.
God bless you all, and thank you.
Under bid awards this morning, an item two is to award the Fire Station 13, Lucky 13 Construction Contract to the lowest responsible bidder, PSI General Contracting Incorporated, in the amount of $3,695,000. The project is funded from SPOS Special Purpose Local Ops and Sales Tax Proceeds and is located in Post 4 on Old Cartersville Road. And Mr. Scott Green and Chief Pelfrey to report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You remember some time ago, you approved some land up on Old Cartersville at Forrester Road for a fire station. That's something that's been in our plans for quite a while. Our call responses in that area have constantly increased, and there's a lot of development going on in that area. And there are some areas out there that are over five miles, directly across the street. They're over five miles, so this will help with ISO as well, hopefully give them a little relief on their home insurance policies. In 2020, we responded to over 16,000 calls. Now we're over 19,000 calls. So this is just, the county just continues to grow with developments. Just with this area, there'll be 4,500 address points that we will respond to. It'll take a lot of relief off Station 1 and Station 3 in New Hope. Take off them. This was from a year and a half ago. There's a lot of development, so it's probably over 5,000 address points by now. So it's just something that's been needed for quite a while that we've had planned, and we're excited about it. Scott's been doing a lot of work behind the scenes on it, and he'll talk to you about the bids and all, but he's worked really hard on it, and we appreciate all his efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. You might want to stay close if we have questions. So Chief mentioned that we had a bid process. The Paulding County Purchasing Division advertised this project on state and county websites on January 25th. Crofton Associates Architects provided the plans and specifications and answered the bid questions during, during the process. Eight general contractors responded to the advertisement initially. Six of these participated in the mandatory pre-bid conference, and finally, four actually submitted bids on March 5th, 2024. The bids range, I know you have them in the backup, I won't read them all off, but they ranged from 3.695 million to 4.56 million. The low bidder, Place Services Inc., Canton, Georgia, as I said, was the low bidder. The next highest bidder was $218,000, or 6% higher. We have reviewed the qualifications and experience of Place Services. We found their experience is adequate, and they have the resources to perform the work. They have worked on similar and much larger projects for municipal, county, and federal facilities. Recently, they completed a fire station, actually about three times bigger, in Delaware, Ohio, and we've received a recommendation from both the architect and the fire captain, who is currently using the facility. It's been in use for about a year or so. They've had time to check it out and make sure everything's operating as expected, and they're very happy with the project. If approved, work would start in about a month and take eight months to complete. With good progress, we would be substantially complete by December. I want to acknowledge the involvement of many dedicated staff in this project. You see Chief and me up here, many, many others are working behind the scenes. You have a list of 30 names I wanted to put in front of you, so you get a snapshot of sort of how many Paulding County staff and, and professionals are involved with this project on the consultant side. This experience from the team helps us ensure the best outcome and, after construction, the longer-term operation and maintenance of the facility. In particular, Chief Pelfrey was the driver of this project. He located the property and provided oversight on the design requirements. He's also very involved with the last two fire stations, which were built around this Tara Golden also was a clutch hitter, as we got into the very, I guess, stressful and time, time-demanding bid process, where we were counting minutes literally to make sure everything followed the process. We recommend approval of this item. In addition, the architect and engineer concur in our recommendation to approve the bid. I've spoken with the principals at the contractor's office, if you have any questions, and we do have a list of preliminary subs for this project, and I'd say three of the seven we were provided are Dallas addresses. The others are all this side of the interstate, I-20 or I-75. So they do make an effort to reach out to local vendors, and I'm sure they'd also be glad to hear, still, leading up to actual construction. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Scott, I don't know if you, Chief Pelfrey would be the one to answer, but I think it'd be interesting to the audience in regards to how this can lower the insurance rate of their home insurance, because...
Chief would be the best one to answer, and I'm not sure. Did we explain this station is just a little bit different than the last one? Maybe he could touch on that also.
Here.
There, as I stated earlier, there's areas out there that are over five miles, and ISO requires for you to be less than five miles from a fire station.
What's ISO?
Excuse me?
What is ISO?
ISO is the Insurance Service Office. Basically, what they do is they grade your department and grade your, what you're adequate with your water and your 911 system and your fire department. They grade that, and based off that, you get a score. We're a three. Right now, that's what our classification is. They base it between a one and 10. So we're at a three, which is, which is very good. So they should, once they do that, insurance companies look at that rating, and that's what they base their rates off of. So the people that are over five miles that live in the back of those subdivisions, was that Staple View Point or?
Yeah, Ansley, Staple View.
Yeah. They, they will actually benefit from this once the station is built. So that's one of the things that, that we were looking at as well. Of course, response times too, and all that. But we'll be housing three firefighters at this station and a battalion chief office there, because we've increased our battalion chiefs, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks again.
Thank you.
Under bid awards, item three is to award the 2024 Asphalt Project Contract 4 to the lowest responsible, responsive bidder, Bartow Paving Company Incorporated, in the amount The streets scheduled in the contract are located in Posts 2 and 3. The project will be funded by General Funds and SPOS. Mr. George Jones.
I won't give you the 15-minute Scott Green dissertation on this one, so I know we're all in a hurry, but the finance department advertised the DOT 2024, 2024 Asphalt Project Contract 4. The project worked consisted of milling, patching, leveling, and plant mix resurfacing on 62 county streets and eight subdivisions and one non-subdivision thru road, a total of 16.78 miles. As you said, the work is located in Posts 2 and Post 3. The bids were opened on March 15th, 2024. There were seven bidders, and Bartow Paving was the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $3,882,080.72. The low bid was 3% lower than the county estimate. The work will be funded using SPOS and General Funds. The next lowest bidder was $184,000 more than the low bid, and this project has a completion date of November 30th, 2024, if approved.
Okay.
I have a question, George, and it's probably going to put you on the spot a little bit, but approximately, how much do we spend in a year on our roads?
Just in asphalt, asphalt resurfacing?
Everything. I mean, red lights.
It's, I know just in asphalt paving this year is close to $20 million, and then when you figure the things like culverts, bridge repair, SPOS projects, I mean, we're, I'll give you a number of the last couple of years, but you're probably talking 30 to 35 million dollars a year.
Thank you.
Item four is also Mr. George Jones, and it's award and authorize the chairman to enter into a consultant service agreement with Trans Systems Corporation in the amount of $837,033.84 for the scoping phase of PI 0019801 Dallas-Aquworth Highway from Mount Tabor Church Road to State Route 92 widening project. Federal funding secured with the Atlanta Regional Commission in the amount of $875,000 that'll be utilized for this project, project's located in Post 1 and also some in Post 4.
As you said, Chairman, Dallas-Aquworth Highway is a two-lane minor artillery roadway located in Posts 1 and Post 4, connects downtown Dallas along Merchant's East Memorial to the crossroads community at Highway 92. The section of Dallas-Aquworth from Mount Tabor Church Road, Fry Road to Cedar Crest, Highway 92, has recent traffic counts approaching 17,000 vehicles per day. The county applied for funding from the Transportation Improvement Program solicitation through the Atlanta Regional Commission. We submitted four projects at the time. This project was selected as an award for a scoping phase. Project scoping is the phase in project development where a process that moves from a recognized problem through ideas into the development of alternatives and environmental screenings. The county was originally awarded $700,000 with 25% match funds, a total of $875,000. A modification was processed in June 2023, which changed the award to 100% federal funding. There's no county match at all for this. On October 25th, 2023, Paulding County issued a request for qualifications, soliciting a statement, soliciting a statement of qualifications from qualified firms to provide consultant services for the scoping phase of this project. On November 22nd, 2023, eight engineering term teams provided SOQs for review by the selection committee. The selection committee shortlisted three consultant engineering teams from those SOQs to move on to Phase 2, a submittal of a technical proposal. After this process, in reviewing the technical proposals from the three teams, the selection committee selected Trans System Corporation as the team most qualified to complete the scoping phase of this project. At this point in time, basically, scoping studies are required for any roadway expansion projects if you're trying to pursue state and federal funds. It's very competitive right now in regards to attaining those state and federal funds for roadway project expansions, and the regional commission and GDOT want to make sure projects are, you know, thoroughly vetted before they award any type of funding. There's also a limited scope going to Merchant's Drive for this project. If you've been down this roadway at all, you know, the whole road essentially itself has a lot of traffic through it. We thought if there was any logical termini break, it would be at Mount Tabor, but again, this could go in theory all the way to Merchant's, the scoping study part. So that portion is included in this particular Trans Systems proposal. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
So they'll do another phase to come further south across Picketts Mill Bridge Creek, and that'll, that'll be the next phase after this one?
It could be. This, this particular study, we're still going through, and again, we're working very closely with GDOT. We're following their scoping study processes, and we're... We're following their scoping study processes and requirements and formats. So depending on what the traffic volumes are, what the projections are, this study, the scoping study could go from Mount Tabor right now and go further south towards Dallas. It could go possibly to New Hope, which would be probably the next a-logical traffic break, or it could go all the way, like I said, to Merchant's depending on, like I said, those traffic counts and those projections. Essentially, you know, where would be a logical break to go from a four-lane back to a two-lane? You've got a significant amount of traffic along the whole corridor. So that's one of the things that we're going to be working through with this study to determine where that logical break would be for the two to four lane.
I think the audience will also be interested in the timetable, if you've got it...
Yes, sir.
Memorized on not just that section, but going on up to 41 that's in progress right now.
Like I said, this project, the scoping study phase is approximately two years from the end notice to proceed issuance. The 92 widening that's currently going on from the state project, from GDOT project, starting at Old Burn Hickory to essentially Cobb Parkway, I believe it's March 2026 is the timeframe that's supposed to be complete.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
We don't have any reports from our committees or departments this morning and no one signed up for agenda items, to speak on agenda items. Under the consent agenda, consideration of a couple of items. Item five is action to approve streets for perpetual maintenance, which is Victoria Heights, Phase Two, Rivulet Drive. And item six is declare the following items listed as surplus and approve the disposal through auction, trade, or donation to GPSTC. And that stands for Georgia Public Safety Training Center. There, I guess if you have an agenda in front of you, there's seven different items. You can see that all the makes and models are back to the year 2000. There's, that's from Water Sewer is a 2000 Ford F-150. Animal Controls got the 2008 Ford 250. The Recreation Department has a 2007 Ford Explorer. The Community Development Department has a 2003 Ford Explorer. The Marshall Office has two vehicles, 2007 Crown Vic and a 2004 Crown Vic. Well, actually, and a third one, Marshall, is 2007 Crown Vic. So everyone can see these vehicles get very aged with a lot of mileage before we will surplus them.
Can I ask a question about that, please? On the, it says, or donation to GPSTC. I understand we donate our police vehicles. These Marshall vehicles, what would they normally get on the open market? I mean, I know it wouldn't be a ton, but would we make anything off auction after those?
Not really. It's the same situation as the sheriff donating them to what we call Gipstick. It's the training facility in near Macon. And so they use them for the EVAC course and the maintenance of those vehicles. So it's, the donation really is better for us to make than try to actually sell them at auction.
Okay.
Good question. No old business this morning. Under new business, item seven is discuss action to adopt ordinance 2024-05 text amendment amending Title One, which is the administration in Title Two, which is zoning and appendix of the Unified Development Ordinance for Paulding County. That's the UDO and for other purposes. Ms. Lippman is already at the podium to enlighten us a little bit more. Thanks, Ann.
Thank you and good morning, everybody. These text amendments were presented to the Planning Commission at their meeting held on March 26, 24. The chairman noted which sections are being changed. I'll just give you a brief description of everything. The changes to Title One Administration were mostly clerical and error correcting some incorrect names, allowing myself the ability, if I see a numbering error or a grammatical error, to change that without taking it to a text amendment and we will keep track of those as well. We just corrected some inconsistencies and we added a section about the Soil and Erosion Control Ordinance and their inspection fees and corrected reference to a certificate of occupancy and submittal of recording fees and replaced it with requiring proof of recording final plats by the developer. We also, in a previous planning commission, had talked about a change to riding stables in the agricultural business section. We struck that from the permitted, list of permitted uses and inserted it to the special exception uses with a minimum acreage of five acres, which takes us to our next change, which was the special exception uses. When we initially did the UDO, we had only noted zoning districts where in one zoning district, a use was permitted. In another zoning district, it was a special exception. Our staff that answered the phone thought it would be helpful to have the list of every zoning district for the special exception uses so you could just look at that section and know what was a special exception. The main purpose of this text amendment was to do some changes to Chapter 280. That is the section about the planning commission. We needed to correct some omissions. We had left out this section about the limits on reapplying if your application is denied. We needed to correct some numbering because some numbering had gotten off the beaten track when we did some edits and we also noted in a section that we were requiring folks who had a zoning stipulation to donate right away, that they only had 90 days to do that. We have changed that to 12 months and we may continue to look at that in the future. We also recommended some changes to the PRD zoning district. That, of course, was inactivated back in August of 2018, but we did want to do some changes. And if I could back up, at the planning commission, they did recommend approval of this, but they asked us to look at two sections. The first, we had, we had a sentence in the special exception uses for accessory structures that just didn't quite make sense. So it used to say, "No accessory building shall be constructed on a lot unless, for properties owned ER R1 and R2, unless the lot is three acres or larger." We've changed that to the lot is three acres or larger on properties owned ER R1 and R2. We thought that made a little more sense. Our changes to the PRD, we instituted some building design requirements and some landscaping requirements in addition to what the base district that I believe has been in our zoning district since at least 2000, maybe it was even original to 1999. Planning Commission had some concerns about the building design requirements that we outlined, worked with a member of the planning commission. I personally drove through some subdivisions and we have revised that. If you want me to read it or if you've read it, we just, ultimately, we have five design standards that will need to be incorporated with all of the building design for lots in PRD. And I'll be happy to go over those in an individual basis or in a group or answer any questions you may have.
I think you guys have done great work on this. I've been slogging my way through it. It's not exactly riveting and from the scale of reading materials, right? But I would like to meet with you between now and when we vote, just for a little minor things. But you guys have done a really exceptional job and I appreciate both the work that you've done and the spirit in which it was done to make our county a better place to live.
Thank you. And the development regulations is even less exciting.
Can't wait.
No offense, development regulations.
And I'd like to join you in Virginia when you have this conversation.
Okay. Glad to.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Me too.
Okay. I will see y'all at 11. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Good report. Thank you. And lastly, item eight is discuss action for the Board of Commissioners to award an amendment of the State Route 92 North Water and Sanitary Sewer Relocation Contract for construction and management and file services to Atkins Realists in the amount not to exceed This purchase is funded through the Water Capital Funds and is located in Post One. Mr. Ray Wooton to report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think everybody knows about the widening project that is going along SR 92, sorry, from SR 92 that's going all the way to the Cobb County line. A couple of years ago, y'all approved a contract for us to relocate the water mains and all the sewer crossings and sewer lines out from under the pavement with MidSouth Builders. MidSouth Builders is doing the construction and you award the contract with Atkins Realists to do the project management and inspection and coordination with DOT, Georgia Department of Transportation, on the relocation of those lines. During the construction, we've had some minor setbacks in getting coordination done with Cobb Marietta. They are relocating a vault that we're connected to, to the other side of the street and we are coordinating the extension of that main to it. We also have a development called Town Center Shopping Center, of which there was a detention pond that the engineer that was designing it did not have proper coordination with DOT. They're still working through the logistics of getting everything moved regarding that storm system, which has pushed our construction back where we're waiting to proceed on a 2,700-foot gap that we have in the construction of the line to have that done. So we're requesting a 90-day extension for us to go ahead and complete that and be out of the way of the contractor doing the widening project.
Any questions for Ray? Had good backup material to read on that, so I appreciate that, Ray.
Thank you.
All right. That's the conclusion of our regular business this morning. We don't have anyone who signed up for nine agenda items and I would ask the panel here, the commissioners, if they have anything they want to announce.
I'd like to say I'm so, so happy to see part of Highway 92 open, all those big happy lanes down there on the south side of the county in Post Three. But I would caution people to be super careful when you're driving through there because it is a little bit confusing if, like, we're, now we have turn lanes, hallelujah. But sometimes you don't realize you're at the place where you've got to get over into that turn lane. Actually happened to me late one night as I was driving through there. The first time I drove through there after it was open, I didn't realize how far back I needed to get in the turn lane. So be careful on that road, but we're glad to see it partially opened and looking forward to seeing the rest of it all the way open soon.
I would like for everybody to keep little Madison Bond in your prayers. She is Tommy Leonard's great niece. She was burned very badly on Easter Sunday with, wax was poured all over her. So please keep her in your prayers.
What's that first name again?
Madison.
I would like to recognize a real leader of the county that I'm always proud to see and his wife is the leader also, so that would be Lauren and Peggy Wills. Lauren's been on the hospital board and Peggy's on the election board and they have done so much for this county that I couldn't recognize them enough. So thank you for being here. And Sandy, thank you again. Sandy, thank you again for being here. I know it's, I think it's very important. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Galloway. I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.